As Mayor of the City of Stanton, Virginia, I call the work session for October 14th, 2021 to order. The first item, I would like to just remind everyone to please not only wear your mask, but to keep it on at all times while you're in City Hall. We do have a mask mandate at the Stanton City Hall. All right. The next item, on October 10th, 2021, I received a request from Vice Mayor Robertson to participate remotely in the October 14th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a family member's medical condition that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Vice Mayor Robertson to state the personal matter which makes it unable for him to attend tonight's council meeting. Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, per Mr. Blair, our attorney, I simply said I have recently traveled out of the area, and while I am not symptomatic, out of an abundance of caution, I would like to remotely participate in tonight's meeting to eliminate any chance of transmitting COVID-19 to others. Now, you're asking...
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to allow Vice Mayor Robertson's remote participation in the meeting pursuant to Stanton City Code Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Darby?
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Vice Mayor Robertson to remotely participate in the October 14th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I will now ask Vice Mayor Robertson to state the remote location from which he is participating.
239 Thorn Rose Avenue, Stanton.
All right, could everyone on City Council as well as in the audience hear Vice Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, welcome, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Thank you very much.
On October 12th, 2021, I received a request from Counselor Dole to participate remotely in the October 14th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a family member's medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counselor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes?
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Counselor Dole to remotely participate in October 14th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Counselor Mead, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Counselor Dole, will you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
1003 East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you. Could everyone on the Stanton City Council as well as the audience here, Counselor Dole?
Yes.
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 All right, welcome, Counselor Dole. All right, the next item on the agenda is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes?
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented for the week of...
Can I help?
Yes, please.
I move to approve, this is Counselor Mead, I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda with the following changes. As to the work session, the deletion of Item Four. As to the regular meeting, the deletion of Item F. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Mead. Do we have a second? Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion?
Hearing... Madam Mayor, I just, I'm sorry, Ms. Mead, I didn't catch which items you were changing.
The deletion of Item Four on the work session.
Work, okay.
And Item F on the regular meeting agenda.
Item F on regular, okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Item Two, a discussion of resolution of the Council of the City of Stanton, Virginia to educate Stanton's residents and medical community about reports of the People's Republic of China's state-sponsored organ harvesting from prisoners of consciousness. Can I please have an update, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Dole. We have prepared a resolution for Council's discussion this evening. The item is not on the regular meeting agenda for consideration. If after Council's discussion of the item this afternoon, there's a sense on the part of Council that it wishes to move forward with consideration of the drafted resolution. Council could add it at that time to either this evening's agenda or to your agenda on October 28th for consideration. And with that, I would invite Councilmember Dole to make any remarks that she wishes to make to start the discussion on the item amongst Councilmembers.
Thank you. As you know, we had a couple representatives present this and matters from the public in a previous meeting. And I was struck by the fact that they were asking for a resolution that condemned involuntary organ harvesting. It seemed to me that that would be something that we could all kind of rally around because I can't imagine the circumstances where we want to be doing involuntary organ harvesting ever or would promote that. And particularly since it was, it's done in China as a, with certain ethnicities and/or religions, or so it's kind of a prejudicial act as well. And I'm hoping that we have some representatives there this evening, and I would welcome them to give a five-minute or so presentation on this if they're available.
Counsel, is that okay? All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of Council, City Council. My name is Haney. Thank you very much for considering a resolution on the persecution of Falun Gong and the practice of forced organ harvesting by the Chinese regime. This practice has been investigated and documented in State Department reports, congressional resolutions, and the publication of several human rights organizations, including the U.N. Commission on Human Rights. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice that was introduced to the public in 1992. It teaches the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. Both my mother and I practice Falun Gong, and we experience significant health benefits as well as a wonderful sense of inner peace and meaning for our lives. Because of Falun Gong's immense popularity and its emphasis on spirituality, the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, consider it a threat. As a result, the head of the CCP outlawed Falun Gong in July 1999 and began a brutal persecution of practitioners, which continues to this day. My mother was arrested six times in China, and the CCP refused to give her a passport. They even forced my mother to appear on TV and publicly condemn Falun Gong. My father had a stroke while she was imprisoned, and since my mother wasn't there to take care of her, of him, he soon passed away. I was here in the United States at the time, and I was not able to return to China for his funeral since I am a Falun Gong practitioner. I would have been arrested as soon as I got off the plane. As an American citizen, I'm grateful that I'm able to practice Falun Gong and tell others about it without restriction. But there are still millions of people in China who are forced to practice it in secret. When they are caught, they are arrested, imprisoned, tortured, sent to labor camps, or disappeared by the CCP. To help us, the most brutal method the CCP uses against Falun Gong is the harvesting of its practitioners' organs. This practice allows Chinese hospitals to provide matching organs on demand for transplant recipients. In one case, a hospital obtained eight kidneys in two months for a sickle patient because his body rejected the first servant. The average wait time for one kidney in the U.S. is three to five years. We have more cases in the book. The biggest difficulty I face in trying to raise awareness of this issue is the fact that it is underreported in the U.S. mainstream media. This is due to the influence of the Chinese regime, which operates the largest and the most advanced propaganda machine on earth. I'm one voice, and I come to you, the level of government that is closer to the people, and I ask you to join your voice with mine because all voices are louder together. By alerting Stanton residents about the practice of forced organ harvesting in China, you will help them make an informed decision when considering options for organ transplant. At the same time, you will help them from becoming the unwitting accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It is my belief that good will be rewarded with good. May peace and prosperity be the fruits of your compassion. Thank you again for your support of human rights and the religion liberty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, I just actually am in total agreement, to be honest with you. And I, after listening to the last time that we had the talk there, the ladies, and then just listening to the involuntary possibility of organ harvesting, that to me is abhorrent. And so I will be lending my support in total agreement with this. And to be honest with you, Carolyn, if it'd be all right with you and be all right with our city manager, I would even lend support to not us waiting, but actually voting on it tonight. I have no problem with that whatsoever after reading the transcript.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, and I agree that particularly since the Speaker has driven some distance to present to us, I would be in favor of us adding it to the regular meeting agenda. And because, as you've seen in some of the briefing materials, we've had Congress do a resolution about this. We've had our own state legislature have a signature of our delegate Aboli on there. And it's just, it's good, it's a good practice for us to educate our citizens so that they don't inadvertently succumb to these organ transplants. So, so, you know, I would like to move that we add this item to our regular meeting. I don't know which letter you want to call it. I don't know if you want to fill in F or what?
Yes.
Which letter are we making?
I think substituting it as Item F would be fine, Ms. Dole.
All right, then, that's my motion.
And I will second back.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move Item Number Two from the work session to Item Number F, to replace F. And this is in relation to the resolution and medical community about reports of the People's Republic of China's state-sponsored organ harvesting. Was there any further, we have a motion in a second?
Madam, Madam Mayor, may I have one question?
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson?
Will, Mr. Blair or Mr. Rosenberg, will, will either one of you be supplying a, you know, a formal motion or as far as we, you know, in that place?
Between the two of us, before the regular meeting, we'll have something to you by email.
Thank you, sir.
For Robertson's.
Thank you.
For all the council members.
Okay.
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole again. It could, can we ensure that if we cannot provide a copy of the resolution tonight to the Speaker, if we could get her information where we could mail it, one or the other?
We can do that. Ms. Dole, we also have been in email contact with the Speaker so we can, we could send a PDF as well and more immediately, I anticipate.
All right, thanks.
Hey, are there any other comments or questions? I actually have a question. Have you had any support from other localities in the surrounding areas such as the city of Waynesboro, Augusta County? Can you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Up to now, we've got 21 resolution in Virginia, local Virginia county and the city and town in this area. I remember Green County is very close, and Page County.
Okay.
And Louise County.
Okay.
Shannon, Shannon County. Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
You've had a lot of support.
Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate it. I just talked Morgan before the meeting. You know, in China, we couldn't imagine this happening. We never, we even cannot meet them at all. No chance. Yeah, don't mention it. I can, I can discuss. I can give speech. No way. Yeah, so that's why we never think about this opportunity. So I really appreciate it.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, give us a lot of hope.
Thank you for helping to educate. And I did speak with Delegate Aboli, and he strongly encouraged the Stanton City Council to support this resolution, and we need to get the word out there. So, again, thank you. All right, that takes us on to Item Number Three, a discussion.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. There was a motion to add to the agenda.
I'm so excited. I'm getting ahead. My apologies. Yes, so Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we made it official. All right, Item Number Three, a discussion of an ordinance amending Chapter 3.35, transient occupancy tax to conform with the Code of Virginia. Can we get an update, Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner of the Revenue Maggie Reagan will present this item.
Welcome.
Hi there, Madam Mayor, members of Council. This item is an ordinance update for transient occupancy tax. Last General Assembly session, there was a Senate bill that was enacted that basically was designed to close a gap. So, in transient occupancy tax, if you were booking a room on a platform like VRBO, you would pay maybe $100 for the room. $90 would go to the host, and $10 would stay with VRBO. They were not paying the transient occupancy tax on the full $100. They were only paying it on the 90. And so this was designed to close that gap and extend the transient occupancy tax to all the charges that are, that are paid by the customer. So if there's a separate cleaning fee or anything else that's added on to that actual price of the lodging, then those things were not here to foretax. Essentially, we're closing the gap there on that so that the full amount that's charged to the customer will have the assessed transient occupancy tax on. That's what this ordinance does. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Counselor Holmes?
If you're only, it said a room of four.
Our ordinance for the City of Stanton only extends occupancy tax to, to hosts who can provide lodging for four or more people. So, that essentially means if you have, say, an Airbnb or a VRBO that just has one queen bed in it, you're not participating in the transient occupancy tax. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Mr. Blair, if you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. I think this, the only, the only other aspect, and this was more just cleanup, is if you take a look at the ordinance, there was a line that isn't there now, but it just cleans, cleans it up so that there ever, if there ever was a prosecution, it says, "All taxes collected pursuant to this chapter are deemed to be held in trust for the city." We added that. I mean, that's, that's implied, and it's in the state code, but it's just important to have it locally because a trust tax is one you keep and then remit to the locality. And therefore, if you collect that tax and you don't remit it to the locality, you can be criminally prosecuted.
Correct. We've never had that problem in my...
Never had that, but it's just good to have that in there.
Yes, absolutely. All right, are there any additional comments or questions?
All right, so this will be Item C under the regular meeting agenda, and there will be a public hearing and consideration.
Okay, so you need me to be returned for that this evening? Or this? You probably should, if you don't mind. Yeah, no, that's no problem. I just wanted to be clear. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, so Item Number Four, we removed, so we will move on to Item Number Five, a discussion of resolution of the Council of the City of Stanton, re-ratifying and reaffirming the compensation paid to Board of Equalization Members. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, John Blair, City Attorney, will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counselors. Mr. Haney, our City Assessor, it has been the custom and practice of the City of Stanton to pay each Board of Equalization member $35 per meeting that they attend. And Mr. Haney came to our office and was wondering how that number was officially determined. And we did some research, and we really could not find an official council action establishing the $35 per meeting payment to Board of Equalization Members. Virginia State Code, Section 58.1-3375, states that the City Council in cities establishes the payment to Board of Equalization Members. Just to give you some context, the City of Charlottesville pays $35 per meeting, and the City of Waynesboro pays $50 per meeting. And those are two comparable cities to Stanton in terms of locality, of location and size. So the resolution before you is simply to make a formal, on-the-record statement for the $35 an hour, or $35 per meeting compensation paid to the Board of Equalization. The only other thing I could add to this is, again, per Mr. Haney, this has gone on for years. It's, it's nothing that's out of the ordinary. It's been the custom and practice. But we felt like it's a good idea to have something official from the Council pursuant to state law that establishes this rate.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? Okay, this will also be Item G on the regular meeting agenda for consideration. All right, thank you, Mr. Blair. All right, with that, we're now on break. We will return at 6:05. Okay, it's 6:05, so we're back into the work session meeting. The next item is number six. A discussion of Virginia Municipal League Conference. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is included on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Brenda Mead, and I would invite her to, to begin the discussion of the subject.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I was hoping that members of City Council who actually attended the conference could share with us the, what their most useful takeaways from the conference were, and I wonder what subject areas you chose to focus on during the conference.
All right, are there any comments by Councilmembers? Mr. Rosenberg, did you have a report?
Madam Mayor, I can share briefly, you know, based on my own experiences at the conference. I was in several sessions along with Councilmembers. Obviously, there were multiple choices during different time slots. The two most significant takeaways, Ms. Mead, from, from my participation involved sessions devoted to ARPA and the allocation of those funds. And there were some extensive presentations related to that subject. Most notably, though, I think for our purposes, is that the Virginia Municipal League has engaged McGuire Woods Consulting and an attorney with McGuire Woods Consulting to be available to Member, VML member localities. And you'll recall, when we were dealing with CARES Act funding last budget cycle, we shared with Councilmembers that we were repeatedly in contact with the city's auditors concerning the permissibility of certain uses of funds, CARES Act funds. And so I think the resources through McGuire Woods Consulting give us another similar avenue to pursue if we have questions about the permissibility of using funds allocated to the city under ARPA. I'm sure that we'll continue to call on the city's auditor to, to run issues past them, but the availability of McGuire Woods Consulting, I think, will give us an even greater comfort level, particularly, you know, with some of the, perhaps, more complex proposed uses of those funds. So that, that's, that was one significant area that was addressed. I also attended a session on social media and press relations. And the big nugget there, I think, was that Facebook actually has a local alert mechanism that's available to local governments. And you have to, you have to register for it, you have to be confirmed by Facebook as running a page for a locality. But, you know, we've all, we've all heard about the Facebook algorithm. And, you know, people may be friends on Facebook, but they never see one another's posts because of the algorithm, the infamous algorithm. Well, this alert, but basically bypasses the algorithm so that if Michelle Bixler pushes out a post, you know, everybody who follows the city's Facebook page will get that post. And it won't get, you know, it, it, it won't be subject to the algorithm. So I actually, you know, shared that with Michelle while I was at the conference, and, and I know that she is pursuing that further, and I think that that will be a very useful tool for the city as part of its communications tools. And, you know, just as a, a, a final thought, there was an interesting session that several of us attended concerning disruptions at Board and Council meetings. And I think that, you know, what we learned from that was that, that governing bodies across the Commonwealth are all encountering greater difficulty in simply conducting their meetings. The, the individual who presented is of, I believe, a former chair of the Arlington County Board of Supervisors. And talked about, you know, several tools that may be available to deal with the situations and, and the responsibility of elected officials in modeling the behavior that they expect from the community at, at these meetings. So that, that's sort of a snapshot from my perspective about some of the more meaningful content that was presented at the conference.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments by Councilmembers? I will say, I brought back the proposed VML 2022 legislative program. I'd like to have copies of this made for all the Councilmembers.
I have a copy.
You do, okay. And the 2022 preliminary policy statements.
I have that.
Okay. And then we also received a workbook, Retail is a Catalyst for Economic Development. That was really interesting. So I'll echo what City Manager Steve Rosenberg stated. The one session we attended concerning disruptions during Council meetings, I was a bit surprised by the one Councilmember that said the best way to handle it is just to tell the citizens where to go. That was frowned upon by everyone in the room. So that, that definitely surprised me. And I think the consensus was that was not the method that any locality should undertake. So, any other comments? All right, hearing none. The next item is item number seven. A discussion of 2022 legislative program. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard will present this item.
Great, thank you. So this begins our process. Each year, City Council adopts a legislative program. So we're looking at the program for 2022. And tonight, we'll begin that discussion. And when, after it's adopted, which is usually November or December, we submit a copy to the Governor, our General Assembly members, Virginia Municipal League, and the Virginia First Cities. I've attached, in your packet is last year's resolution that we get, which is a starting point to next year's packet. Speaking of the VML legislative packet, I, I will, I will include that also as part of the material for that meeting. I mean, we can send it to you, obviously, sooner than that, but I have the final, I have the one that doesn't say proposed, so we'll send that out as well. So if you had a chance to look at the legislative packet from 2021, tonight is just the chance to start providing feedback on what you'd like to see in the next packet. And as a reminder, we've had our Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli appear in front of you all to discuss the legislative packet in person. And we can invite them again for the December work session to do that, just like we've done the past couple of years.
I would like that.
Yeah.
What about the rest of the Council? Would you like to?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we can certainly extend that invitation to them. And then at the November work session, we will have another discussion about the packet once I receive feedback from you all. I'm also working with VML to update it to make sure that anything that was addressed during the session last year gets taken out of our packet or reworded. So I'll have all that worked out by then. And then we can either, you all can either adopt your packet in November or provide more feedback, and we can adopt it in December, like we did last year. So I'll open the floor to any comments, or you can email them to me. I'll shoot an email out after the meeting tonight. If you'd rather, you send me an email with your ideas and thoughts. But I'm also, we can have a discussion here tonight as well to start talking about it.
Are there any comments or questions for Ms. Beauregard?
I have a question, Ms. Beauregard.
Counselor Mead.
There are some items in the 2021 legislative program that, that, for instance, I'll, I'll cite Item D, Chesapeake Bay Water Quality, requesting the Commonwealth increase stormwater local assistance fund, funding. It would be useful for us to have an update so that we know whether in, you know, that the, the General Assembly did, in fact, increase that funding for water quality and agricultural BMP cost share. And anything else that, where we've indicated that we wanted to see an increase to a certain number, that would be useful.
Yeah, I'm working, yes, ma'am, I'm working on that with VML currently. So we'll definitely have all of this updated, where there needs to be updates by the November meeting.
Thanks.
All right, are there any additional comments at this time?
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Counselor Dahl.
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we put something in there about the new fund for flood, flood, I don't know if they call it officially flooding fund or whatever, from the proceeds of the carbon revenues they're getting, and, and to make sure that it's, it is used for the, the purpose, good purposes, because it's environmental, that's the purpose. And we, we, we sure could use all the funding we can get in terms of fixing our flooding issues, so. I don't have the details on that fund other than just, just, I just know that it exists.
Okay, is there any, anything else?
And I would, excuse me, this is Counsel, Counselor Mead. There's an item in the VML 2022 legislative agenda on marijuana and clarification of local referendum and state support. I was in Michigan last, I guess, on Monday, actually. Time flies. And in Michigan, both medical and recreational, adult recreational marijuana are legalized. And they're collecting a lot of tax revenue on the sale of legal marijuana. So I'd love to see an opportunity for Stanton at some point to, to permit the retail sales of medicinal and recreational marijuana.
Okay. Great, any additional comments? I'll be wanting to talk about this in greater detail the next time we review the legislative program, but the Middle River Regional Jail staffing and construction funds.
I'm, I'm gonna give an update on that, for sure.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right. Next is Roll Call. We are now at the portion of the agenda called Roll Call. Roll Call allows each Councilmember an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff following up, either during the same meeting or at a future work session or regular meeting, if additional time is required to respond to a Councilmember inquiry. All right. I'll start with you, Counselor Holmes, if you don't mind.
Okay, my biggest concern is employees, you know, and I don't know what we can do, any, it's, it's across the board here at tourism.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I did, I lost everything Terry said. It just, the mic dropped.
I was just talking about lack of employees for all businesses in our town. We don't, I don't know how we can do, go about trying to recruit people. I mean, I'm to the point now that I would take some Afghan resettled people here right now. I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it's killing me at work. I mean, I just don't have time to do anything else but what I'm doing at work. And, and I just don't, I know a lot of, I was talking to, in the Tourism Department this morning, or in the meeting, and, and Jeff at Fire Street is going back to five days a week. He's closing back down two days. And you just see this going across the board. And, and there's people coming. I'm, I'm being so busy at work. I mean, we've had the busiest, it's hard to believe that COVID ever happened. That's how busy we are. And, and I don't know if there's anything, any ideals on how, because I know even with the city, we had trouble recruiting people. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do or any kind of campaign that we could do to try to draw in people to, to work. Anyway, that's the only thing that I could say.
Got a question for Mr. Rosenberg as far as what we can do to draw people in? Maybe something to think about?
It, it's certainly a, a topic of ongoing discussion amongst Ms. Beauregard, Mr. Ben, and myself. And we're encountering, encountering the same sorts of difficulties that, that Councilmember Holmes has, has addressed. And, and, you know, it, it's certainly a, a subject that's worthy of our continued consideration, and we will continue to, to pay attention to it and to focus on it.
Counselor Darby.
I don't have anything.
Counselor Mead?
I have nothing.
Counselor Dahl?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, I don't, don't have anything at this time. I, I've been, well, and this is not for Steve, but I mean, I know something that Terry and you're talking about trying to get people to work. And, you know, we're, just the thing on, even on the national front, talking about Southwest Airlines. I mean, they're looking at thirty percent drop-off. And it's because of Southwest, and I don't know what the answer is, but I mean, they're talking basically, not only the, their pilot's union, their, their baggage help, it's due, a lot of it is because of mandates for getting vaccinations. I said, I've been in ads- of it is because of mandates for getting vaccinations. I said, I've been an advocate for them, but I also know that there, that people, there's just a certain population that they are not going to stand for people telling them they've got to get this. We have to do a better job of convincing them to get it, but they do not respond when people say you will get this. And, like I said, that's just, it's an unfortunate part of, of what we're going through, but I'm just, I'm just putting that out there for general, you know, edification. I mean, we lost half of our tech at the pharmacy. We're getting new ones in, but we lost half of them because of that.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think that's the reason why we're shorthanded. I have problems because I have, I have employees who can't afford childcare, you know, they, they really, you know, they, it's gotten to the point where only one person in the family can work, you know, and, and they'll work on the day their partner is not working, you know, but it's, it's just, the, the cost of everything is, is, it's not, it doesn't pay for them to work, you know, and I don't think that, you know, until you get some things where people have some support, they're on a domestic front, you know, you're not gonna, it, it's really, it's hard for people to live in town because rent is so high, you know, and a lot of people don't have transportation, so they work near wherever they live. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors, and I don't think that a mandate is what's causing all this. I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's the problem.
Well, Terry, I, and I'm not saying mand, I mean, that is some of the problem, yes. But, but then again, you've got, I mean, we're looking at, you know, which, which cat is chasing which tail, because you talk about the cost. I mean, well, we, I don't want to get into a political discussion, but I mean, you said the cost is going up. What is creating, what is creating this inflation?
Well, it's shortage, it's shortage of truck drivers, it's transportation, it's, there's a whole bunch of things. I mean, you know, outbreaks of COVID and meatpacking factories, and you, you just name it, you can go down the line, you know, lack of chips from China. I mean, there's all kinds of things. It's affecting the whole, the whole supply chain, you know, but that's happening on a national level, but it hits us all everywhere.
It does, it does. It's a trickle down.
Okay. My turn. Right. Mr. Rosenberg, I actually have two questions for you. The first one involves the restrooms out at Gypsy Hill Park. Can you give an update on where that stands in the CIP?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Johnston whether he's able to address that, and if he's not, we'll get an answer for that. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I, I can kind of partially address that, in that we are renewing the Gypsy Hill Bathroom Project for Inclusion in the CIP that is being, currently being assembled. Now, how that plays out in the CIP, and what Phil does with that, but we are certainly going through and updating, updating our estimates and getting, and making sure that it's a viable project when it's put into the new CIP.
Thank you. Right, the next item, I know that you sent an email out to the council concerning this matter, but let's talk about the trapping of cats taken to the shelter. Can you talk a little bit about the trapping of the cats throughout the city?
Well, what I had understood, and what I indicated in council mem, to council members in the email to which you're referring, Mayor Oaks, is that at least two of you have been contacted by individuals who were concerned that there had been a change in practice surrounding the trapping of cats in the city. And what I communicated to all of you in an email sent yesterday, is that, that there has been no change in practice from a practice that was implemented during the tenure of my predecessor, Steve Owen. So, during his tenure as City Manager, there was a decided shift in an approach to the trapping of cats in the city. It had been a regular occurrence for animal control officers to respond to complaints from citizens, and to trap cats upon request, and to transport them to the, to the animal shelter. And during Mr. Owen's tenure, that practice was discontinued, with the exception of certain limited circumstances. And since my appointment in July of 2019, the practice implemented during Mr. Owen's tenure has continued without change. And there, there are certain circumstances in which animal control officers will trap cats in the city, including to assist an elderly or disabled citizen who may be dealing with, with animals on their property, and they don't have the capability to deal with the tasks involved with trapping and transporting. And in other certain circumstances with extenuating conditions. And I described a couple of those to you in the email that I sent yesterday. But on the whole, the, the animal control officers are not in the business of trapping, and they continue to do their work in the same way that they have been doing it since the change in approach was implemented during Mr. Owen's tenure.
Right. So, um, they'll provide the traps for an individual to trap the cats themselves. However, there are circumstances where they may trap the cats, in which maybe the private citizen is elderly and cannot do it on their own.
That, that's, that's one example, yes.
Madam Mayor.
You are correct, though, that they will, that they will provide the traps, but the trapping and transportation, the trapping and transporting is the responsibility in most instances of the property owner.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Mr. Rosenberg, and if I speak, if I'm speaking out of turn, please just tell me you'll talk, talk later. But I reckon the question that I have was, was an e, was an email that was sent out through city staff, and then I think Carolyn made a comment about it, and I too was aghast. I did not respond to it, to be honest with you. But can you fill us in on anything that's being done about the shelter? I'm assuming it's Parks and Recs, but the one closest to the golf course, for one, with that issue there?
Vice Mayor Robertson, I'm happy to address the question. I've, I've just completed late yesterday, really, the collection of the background information that I needed to provide a detailed response.
Right.
And I will follow up with that. But the facility was cleaned by Parks and Rec staff at the end of the week, in preparation for the event. And it was checked by Parks and Rec staff on Saturday morning. And I, I won't say that it was up to the standard that perhaps the person who complained was expecting, but it's, it certainly was in a condition where it could have been used. And it was not checked again on Sunday morning, the day of the event.
Okay.
And so, I think that, you know, I can't be certain of this, but I, I believe that in that 24-hour period or so, between Saturday morning, when it was checked, and Sunday morning, when the event occurred, that it may have been the target of some vandalism. And that's, that's a recurring problem in, in the park generally, and with that shelter specifically. So, the broken light fixtures, it's an ongoing problem. And, you know, we, we repair them, or we replace them, and they're vandalized yet again. Now, the, the one result from the conversations with Mr. Tuttle is that we're now, you know, he's got employees who are on site seven days a week. And so, we're gonna start checking a venue that's reserved for an event, on the morning of the event. So, in this case, it was checked on Saturday for an event on Sunday. While going forward, we would check it on Sunday for an event on Sunday, so that we would still have time to deal with, with some conditions, you know, if, you know, if it was, if there was some extreme vandalism that occurred, you know, overnight before an event, we may not be in a position to deal with it. But generally, I think we're gonna be in a position to address anything that, that we see if we inspect it on the day of the event. And so, he and I have had a conversation about that, and he assures me that that, that's a change in practice that will result from this particular inquiry. The, the, you know, the bathrooms were cleaned, they were locked after they were cleaned, there was no sign, I think, of any sort of forced entry. They're, the bathrooms are old. And, you know, some of the, and, and we just had a question about the, you know, the Gypsy Hill Park bathroom projects for purposes of the CIP. And, you know, so, you know, from my personal experience, I can attest to the fact that, you know, you walk into a bathroom in, in Gypsy Hill Park, and sometimes your sense of smell is challenged. And so, you know, I wasn't, I haven't been there to see it myself. I don't know what the particular condition is. I can just tell you that they were cleaned, and they were locked. But we're gonna pay closer attention, and specifically, we are going to begin, begin inspecting reserved venues on the day of the event, to see whether we can prevent a recurrence in the future.
All right. I, I thank you for that. I appreciate that.
All right. Item number nine is a closed meeting for discussion of prospective candidates for the position of clerk of council. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Holmes?
I move that council enter a closed meeting for the discussion of prospective candidates of, for appointment to the position of clerk of court pursuant to Virginia Code Section
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I, I think it's the clerk of council, rather, rather than clerk of court, and that should be clarified, as they're in.
Yes, clerk of council, I'm sorry.
All right. So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Mead is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're now in closed session.
Mayor Oaks.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
All right. I call the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council of October 14.
Madam Mayor, excuse me.
You need to come out.
You need to come out of the closed meeting.
That's right.
And then adjourn the work session.
Right. My apologies. We're running a little bit behind, guys, so we do apologize. All right, I'll entertain a motion to come out of the regular, the, excuse me, the closed meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting, and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second and Madam Mayor, Terry Holmes.
Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll. Ms. Doll, oh, shoot.
Technical difficulties.
It looks like she came up just.
Ms. Doll. Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I now call the work session meeting adjourned. And I now call the regular meeting to order for the Stanton City Council in October 14, 2021, at 7:33. Please forgive our tardiness. The first order is to just remind everybody, if you come into City Hall, please wear a mask and keep it on at all times. We do have a mandate in place, as far as wearing masks. At the next item, pledge of allegiance. If you would like, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation, moment of silence, and tonight, it is by Vice Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be doing a Christian prayer, so if you would like to join in, please bow your heads. I will listen to what God, the Lord, says. He promises peace to his people, his faithful servants, but let them not turn to folly. Surely, his salvation is near those who fear him, that his glory may dwell in our land. Lord, our God, you are help, comfort, and life to us in everything we have to endure. We gather before you as poor, weak people, but you can make us rich, and give us new life, so that our lives prove we hold to your will, and to the justice you bring on earth. May we be one in spirit through all we experience in our hearts, to the glory of your name. May the praise and thanks of many people ring out into all the world, because you are help and deliverance from all evil. Amen.
All right, thank you. And the next item is the mayor's report. I would just like to state that several members of the city council attended the Virginia Municipal League Conference. We were able to work with other localities and learn from them, as far as different techniques, when it comes to the business of their city. And it was an enjoyable time. It was the first in-person VML conference that they've had in two years. So, it was delightful to be able to see our neighbors throughout Virginia. Also, I've attended several different meetings involving ARPA funding. It looks like we have been very lucky in what we are receiving through ARPA funding. It looks like we have been very lucky in what we are receiving through ARPA funding. And at this time, the greatest needs appear to be childcare, affordable housing, mental health, as well as food insecurities, so, and transportation. So there's several different needs in our community that many different groups are working very hard to help lift their neighbor up. So it's been very heartwarming to see neighbor helping neighbor. All right, with that, I'll entertain any additional items by members of council. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Our next item is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 23, 2021. Any takers?
Mayor Oaks, I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, all right. Counselor Meade would like to make a motion to amend the minutes.
On lines 68 to 69 of the draft minutes, I would like that comment to read, Ms. Meade read a portion of paragraph two of the Augusta County Board of Supervisors' public statement dated September 14, 2021 concerning the Augusta County Courthouse and the stance of multiple city council members on the subject of Augusta County Courthouse.
And so you would like to add the portion about multiple council members?
Yes, no, I would like to clarify that it was not an article concerning the Augusta County Courthouse. It was a, it was paragraph two of the Augusta County Board of Supervisors' public statement dated September 14. I'd like to be specific, rather than saying it was simply an article concerning the Augusta County Courthouse.
All right.
So I've shared that, I've already shared that with the clerk. So she has the wording that I've suggested.
Okay, so you are putting that in the form of a motion?
I am.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second by Counselor Holmes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Meade.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to our regular meeting business. And the first item is item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Barbara Whipple and Paul Kazaroff, excuse me, to vacate and abandon undeveloped Montgomery Street located between 301 Fayette Street, 522 Stewart Street, and 309 Fayette Street. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Senior Planner Rodney Rhodes will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. As the mayor noted, the applicants are requesting a vacation of an undeveloped paper street that connects a previously vacated portion of Lush Ball Street with Fayette Street. The applicants recently purchased 309 Fayette Street, and if my city records are correct, they bought it one year ago today, October 14, 2020. And unfortunately, some old flats of this area dating back to the 1870s indicate that there is a street running through their property and actually running through their house. However, more recent, and when I say more recent, in the past 125 years, maps and flats of that area do not show that street. However, city staff, including the city attorney's office, the applicant, and the applicant's surveyor could not find any indication that this section of this paper street was ever formally vacated. In order to formally vacate a street or an alley, it has to go through a public hearing before city council, and we could find no records of that. So therefore, the applicants are trying to clear up this. It's basically a housecleaning measure for them. Obviously, they would like to get this resolved. Staff has reviewed this request and seen no issues with this. Other sections of Madison Place and Lush Ball Streets have been formally vacated, leaving this section to terminate in a dead end, and it serves no public purpose. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on September 18, 2021. No one spoke in opposition to this vacation, and the commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the vacating of the paper street. I don't have the mouse with me, but if you can see that, it's an orange. That's the area that would be vacated. The area behind it in red has already previously been vacated. I'd be glad to take any questions to have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
All right, are there any questions? Does council need to hear from Barbara Whipple and Paul Kazaroff? Am I pronouncing your last name properly? Okay, good job. All right, well, with that, we're going to have a public hearing and a consideration of this matter. City attorney has requested that I read the rules concerning a public hearing. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you also will be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for the public hearings and matters from the public, and please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So again, if you would like to speak on this matter, just come to the podium, give your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak. You can speak either for or against it. I'll hit the gavel to open it up, and once I hit the gavel a second time, that'll close it out. So with that, the public hearing is now open.
I'm not very well acquainted with a lot of things. My name is Albino Albert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street, Stanton. This request that this individual is making has to be denied. That alley was put in there for a reason. You close it off, how does a fire engine, how does rescue ever get behind those houses? It doesn't. You've already closed off one street, vacated it. Now you're going to close off that other one? How do you get back there in an emergency? You don't. It should be denied. The people who put in that there alley did it for a reason. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak from Zoom? Do we have any hands raised?
Sorry, just a second. We're having a little technical.
Technical difficulties. Technology's great when it works. I would sing, but you guys would be hitting for the doors.
No, 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 no.
Someone else in the room is available.
All right, we'll go ahead and go back to the audience. Anyone in the audience that would care to address this issue? Welcome.
Thank you. It's over here. I always forget this. Thank you, members of city council. I'm Barbara Whipple. Together with my husband, Paul Kazaroff, we are the owners, and our daughter, by the way, Clara, are the owners of this property, 309 Fayette. And in response to the gentleman's comments that preceded me, I should say there is no road. There's nothing there. And so there's no way of entering the property other than, well, by, I would think, some care. It is on a slope. But in any case, it's sort of immaterial because there are fire hydrants in the area, and I, you know, I don't think it's a substantial complaint. The reason I intended to get up here was just to thank you. The planning commission, I made the same comments to the planning commission. Members of the planning department, and specifically, I guess it's planning and zoning, have been so helpful. It's been a real education. I really enjoyed it. It took a lot of research, and we were shepherded along the way in a very good way. And I just wanted to specifically mention Lyndon Nesselrod. She was extremely available and helpful and gave me guidance. Also Rodney Rhodes and Tim Hartless. So I just put that to you. They worked really so effectively and responsively. Thank you. Thank you. Did I give my address? We live at 111 Madison Place. I don't think I mentioned that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that would care to address the council? All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Counselor Dahl.
I move the council adopt the ordinance and approve the street vacation as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Meade. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Meade.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item B, a public hearing in consideration of a request by the city of Stanton to amend Chapter 18.120 Yard Building Setback and Open Space Exceptions, subsection 18.120.0104F of Title 18, zoning of the Stanton City Code. You can tell that was written by an attorney. All right, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will also present this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. This zoning tax amendment was first considered by council on July 22, 2021. This zoning tax amendment in its original format would allow the development of one single-family house on a lot that is landlocked if it could meet certain criteria, such as having a 10-foot easement for ingress egress. Council denied that zoning tax amendment on a four-to-three vote. However, on August 12, council reconsidered that amendment and referred the matter back to the planning commission with one proposed change that would limit one lot per easement also. So, and I believe council member Claffey is one that brought that forward with the concern that there are lots that may piggyback on the same easement, and then therefore you would have a de facto private road that would not have any standards and serve multiple lots. So staff incorporated that into the amendments. This was presented to the planning commission on September 18, 2021. During the public hearing, four people spoke in favor of the amendment, and one person spoke about the need for a detailed study to determine the implications of this amendment. And the commission on a four-to-zero vote recommended approval of the amendment. I have several examples of lots that could potentially benefit from this tax amendment. These are three lots on, off of Ramsey, Ramsey and Powhatan Streets, two smaller lots in the front, and then a seven-acre lot in the back. It's my understanding that all three of those have individual easements to a city-maintained road, so each of those could have one single-family house if this amendment goes through.
Mr. Rhodes, or it's Vice Mayor Robertson. Is, are we able to see that at all? But it's not showing up.
Sorry.
Let me go back to that.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So the two lots in the front I was referring to are right here. They would have an easement out to Powhatan, separate easements. And Ramsey Street also has, I think it has two separate easements. One comes out here to Ramsey, and I think another one comes out to Powhatan. But they would only be allowed to have one dwelling on those seven acres. This is another example, a lot that is landlocked off of Donaghy Streets. Some of you may be aware of this. The owner of this lot also owns the lot in front of it, so providing an easement would not be an issue. So therefore, you know, this lot meets all other requirements and could be developed as a single-family house. Regarding the concern that council member Claffey brought up, here's another example where there are seven landlocked lots, and I don't know if any of these have an easement out to a city-maintained street. However, without that amendment that's being considered tonight, potentially there could be one easement that would go the, you know, the length of these lots and tie into one of the city-maintained streets, and you'd have seven lots using basically a private lane. But with this amendment, that would not be allowed. Each of them would have to have their own separate easement. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Can you repeat that last sentence? I think that's very important.
With the.
One house.
The one house per lot, and each of them would have to have a separate easement out to a city-maintained street. So the amendment came before you a couple months ago, did not have that provision in that had to be, you know, one lot per easement also.
Right, okay. All right, are there any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Just like before, I'll bang the gavel, and if you'd like to speak for this measure or against it, please come to the podium. We'll alternate between the audience and the Zoom. And then once I bang the gavel again, that'll close it out. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Yes, sir.
My name is Albino Albert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street. I'm always concerned about people coming in here, trying to change what was done many years ago by former council members. They did it for a reason. And now, all of a sudden, people want to keep changing things. Why, I don't know, except it's a money deal. Every time you close an alley, every time you close a street, you're creating a fire hazard. Whether you want to believe it or not, you're pushing houses closer and closer together, and that's out of order. Once a fire starts, it just goes all over the place. And you should seriously be thinking about what people, what council people before you did and why they did the things they did, not what these people want today.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith, are there any hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right, is there anyone from?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Springer, and I live at 603 Hoover Street in Stanton. I've been a resident of the city now for a little over 20 years, and I'm not sure that I had ever really cared about certain things like this until about four years ago, when I became a Realtor. And I started to notice that there was really a lack of affordable housing in places in the city, things that are underutilized that could be adequately used to address the needs of folks that are coming in and trying to become residents and become viable citizens of our community. As I've looked at this and looked at the easements, I'm no easement expert. However, when I see the potential for what could happen here, and not just this area, but I think other areas around the city that are underutilized. but I think other areas around the city that are underutilized, I think it's very important for us to take this opportunity, pass the amendment, so that we can move forward with continuing to provide affordable, good housing for folks in this city and give them the opportunities that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. Anyone else from the audience? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members, Charles Van Bishop Jr., 38 Woodley Road. As I have said in certain meetings with Mr. Rhodes and staff in different situations and also at the planning commission, I feel this is long overdue. It's a common sense improvement. I've been dealing with this type of issue, I hate to admit, since the 1970s. And without going into all that history, which you don't want to hear, I just commend the staff for working on this. I was surprised it didn't pass council and I think I understand why. But in any case, I commend not only the work, but the commonsensical approach to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. Was there anyone else from the audience? Welcome.
Welcome. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, thank you for your time and what you do. I'm 59 years old. I'm a Stantonian, have a great investment in Stanton, a lot of history buildings. And we do need to concentrate on affordable housing, something that we really need to set forward. I think this is an idea. I think we need to capsize on it. And once again, I appreciate, I have a little over 100 employees that work out of City of Stanton. And that needs to be always considered about housing. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for allowing me with time and y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Can we get your name and address?
I'm so sorry. Richard Landis, 107 Sycamore Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Landis.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. All right. Anyone else? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion. Mayor Oakes. Counselor Mead.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the amendment as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Stowe? Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item is item three, a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 3.35 Transient Occupancy Tax to conform with the Code of Virginia. This was also item three from the work session. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner of the Revenue Maggie Reagan will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have, you have a proposed amendment to City Code Section 3.35 on transient occupancy tax before you this evening. And the impetus for this was a piece of legislation that was adopted in the 2021 General Assembly that changed revenue codes 58.1-3819 and 3826 to extend the application of transient occupancy tax to the full price of a room paid by an end consumer, including all fees, rather than just the amount that was paid to the accommodations provider. So that, this basically rounds out the piece for transient occupancy tax to be applied to all fees that the customer pays and not just for the price of the room.
Any questions on that before you open the public hearing? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. We have another public hearing. I'll bang the gavel. If you'd like to speak for or against this particular matter, please come to the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom. You have five minutes. Then state your name and your address. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience care to speak concerning this matter? Ms. Smith, do we have anyone in the Zoom?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. One last chance, guys. All right. Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move the city council adopt the proposed ordinance amending Stanton City Code Chapter 3.35 Transient Occupancy Tax to conform with the recently enacted state code provisions.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second and Mayor Oakes.
We have Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Stowe?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reagan. All right. The next item is item D, a consideration of a request by Erin and by Thea Reed for a variance from Title 17 subdivision, Section 17.15.180, size and shape of residential lots generally. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will present this item.
Welcome back.
Thanks again. Architect Mike Brown, on behalf of the Reeds, has requested a variance to Section 17.15.180 of the subdivision ordinance. This section of the subdivision ordinance prohibits the creation of lots with elongated portions designed to achieve the required street frontage. We commonly refer to those as pipe stem lots. Here is a picture of, actually all three of the lots are shown on here. Two of them are shown in red. That you'd like to combine these two. There is also a lot beside it right here. And this is an existing lot, narrow lot, and then have this large lot in the back that has no street frontage, well, no frontage on a developed city street. There are some undeveloped city streets. I'm having a hard time seeing without my glasses. But their request is to combine these two and then this would provide access for the larger lots. I believe the conceptual idea is to build a house kind of in this corner. There's some significant topography issues with this property, which really restricts the amount of development. I do not see this being conducive for a subdivision. And therefore it would be impractical to build out one of these existing city streets to serve one lot. So they have bought these three lots and like to combine those two. They like to leave the option to build a house on this lot. And then like I said, on these two combined ones, it'd be one lot. This back lot is approximately three acres. The property is zone R2 Low Density Residential District, which allows only one dwelling per lot. And I would note that although the Code of Virginia has some rather strict requirements for a zoning variance, there are none in the state code for a subdivision variance. So it's basically up to the city as far as what the city considers acceptable for a subdivision variance. If there's something unique, if there's a unique condition about the site and the opinion of the planning commission, a departure may be made without destroying the intent of such provision, then a variance may be granted. As a stated, currently there could be two houses built, both on these small lots that have existing street frontage. If this variance is approved, these two lots combined, there'd still only be two houses built on these parcels. It would just move the location of the house to a more advantageous place for the applicants. I would note that the proposed division meets and exceeds all other city code requirements. And the planning commission considered this at their September 18, 2021 meeting. I incorrectly stated in the staff analysis conducted public hearing, no public hearing is required before the planning commission or city council. But after considering this, the commission on a four to zero vote recommended that the variance be granted. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time. Mr. Brown, the agent for the applicants is on Zoom and I believe the, the owners may also be on Zoom. If you have, if you have any, like to take any comments from them or have any questions of them.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes at this time?
Rodney?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at Hancock, but you said that, I mean, it appears to be Hancock Street, but that runs into the upper portion of that lot, which you said is not conducive to building, correct?
That's correct, sir. And it is very cost prohibitive to build a section of city street and have it approved by the city to city standards and then, and then incorporated to the city street system.
Got you. Okay.
All right. That was Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right. All right. Would the applicants like to say a few words to council?
Yes, this is Mike Brown. I'm the architect for the Reeds. I live at 713 Opie Street in Stanton. Thanks, Madam Mayor and members of the council for this chance to speak on this. Councilman Robertson, I think I can clarify a little bit on Hancock Street, that question. There's a very deep ravine that runs diagonally through the site and Hancock runs right into that and eventually goes off a cliff there.
Okay.
Which is probably why nothing was ever done with it before.
Okay.
We have with the, we have 67.5 feet of frontage there and the minimum requirement is 70 feet. And we support the pipe stem ordinance. We are only asking for this for a variance for 30 inches, basically, to allow a driveway to be put in there. And we believe that it still maintains the spirit of the ordinance as written. And as I've previously mentioned, the, the other ways into the lot are pretty much extremely difficult to use. Prohibitive to get there. And this is why we would request approval of this.
All right. Thank you. Would the Reeds like to say a few words?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Bithia Reed and wanted to, and we're the property owners for the properties that we've been speaking about off of 35 Arlington Street. And thank you to the city council for inviting us to participate in the meeting this evening. And thank you to Mike Brown for representing our interests in this and for Mr. Rhodes' work in putting together a very cohesive, understandable thought process about what leads us to make this request. We'd be happy to answer any questions if y'all have any and just thank you for allowing us to be here.
Does council have any questions for Erin and Bithia Reed or Mike Brown? Thank you. All right. We're not going to have a public hearing on this matter, so I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Darby?
I move that council adopt the resolution and approve the variance from Title 17, Section 17.15.180 as recommended by the planning commission.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. Terry Holmes.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Stowe?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Mayor Oakes, before you move on to the next subject, I just want to let you know that the Reeds will probably be back before you next month.
Okay.
Next week, the planning commission is considering vacating an alley that runs between these two small lots, seven and eight. So depending on what happens at the planning commission next week, that will be before you next month. But that's an alley vacation that's only a lot deep and only serves their property.
All right. Well, we look forward to seeing the Reeds again. So thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item, item E, is a consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 5.20.220, issuance of license of Chapter 5.20, precious metals and gems and pawnbrokers of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code to conform with the Code of Virginia. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, City Attorney John Blair will present this item.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you is an ordinance amendment that is what I would call a cleanup. The state code has changed and pawnbrokers now must present a bond with surety in the amount of $50,000. Our previous code section had the old state, the old total of $2,500. And again, this is in the Code of Virginia at, in Title 54.1-Section 4003. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? All right. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Counselor Dahl.
I move the city council adopt the proposed ordinance that would amend Section 5.20.220, issuance of license of Chapter 5.20, precious metals and gems and pawnbrokers of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code as indicated in the proposed ordinance to conform with the language with the Code of Virginia.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. Mayor Oakes.
Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Stowe?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You might call it the pawn of a new day.
Oh, brother. Oh, mercy. We could have gone all night. The next item is item F. We, during the work session and the approval of the work session and regular meeting agendas, we altered this to include item number two from the work session is now item F on the regular meeting agenda. It's a discussion of resolution of the council of the city of Stanton, Virginia to educate Stanton's residents and medical community about reports of the People's Republic of China's state-sponsored organ harvesting for prisoners of conscience. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, thank you. And I would suggest that the minutes reflect this item as consideration of resolution. The discussion, as the mayor indicated, occurred during the work session. Council voted during the work session to add this item to the regular meeting agenda for its consider, for council's consideration. You have before you this evening, for your consideration, a resolution which, the, the significant purpose of which is to inform residents of the city and the medical community serving the city and the surrounding region about risks of travel to China for organ transplants. And it provides expressly for the council's opposition to any coerced organ harvesting, including but not limited to any state-sponsored non-consensual organ harvesting from prisoners of conscience. And finally, the resolution as proposed provides for its delivery to the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia and to both United States senators representing the Commonwealth of Virginia. This item was added to the work session agenda at the request of council member Dahl and she may have remarks that she would also like to make to council before council considers the resolution.
Counselor Dahl, did you want to make any remarks?
Yes, thanks. I'd like to thank the two Ballin Gong practitioners who have brought this to our attention. And we appreciate the opportunity to be educated on these kinds of things. of things all the time and also then to share this with our citizens in support of allowing them to understand that there may be coerced, unenforced, involuntary organ harvesting and it's something that we need to pay attention to in the area of human rights. So I'm happy to have brought this in the form of a resolution to be presented and without any further ado, I move that council adopt the proposed resolution to educate Stanton's residents and medical community about reports of the People's Republic of China's state-sponsored organ harvesting from prisoners of conscience.
Madam Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Doll, Vice Mayor Robertson.
And I will gladly second that.
Right, we have a second, any further discussion? As the city manager indicated, we had the discussion during the work session and we're taking the consideration now during the regular meeting, which means we're obviously voting on it. This is a measure that has been supported at the federal level, the state level, and we feel at the local level, we need to get the word out and we need to educate. So with that, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you and thank you so much for visiting us here in Stanton. All right, that takes us to the next item, item G, a consideration of resolution of the council of the city of Stanton, re-ratifying and reaffirming the compensation paid to Board of Equalization Members. This was item five on the work session and again, item G on the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, the city's resident comic, Mr. Blair, will present this item.
Oh, boy.
No.
Welcome back.
Thank you. On a more serious matter, as discussed during the work session, the city has a Board of Equalization and the state code requires the council to set the compensation of the Board of Equalization Members. Before you is a resolution to set their compensation for thirty-five dollars per meeting. This is, this has been the custom and practice for years going back and to give you again, a couple of local examples, the city of Charlottesville pays its Board of Equalization Members thirty-five dollars per meeting, the city of Waynesboro pays its Board of Equalization Members fifty dollars per meeting. So I think it's well within what local cities of a similar size to Stanton are paying their Board of Equalization Members per meeting.
Yeah, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
I move that council adopt the proposed resolution ratifying and reaffirming that the Board of Equalizations Members are to be compensated thirty-five dollars per each meeting attendant for their time engaged in the duties of the BOE.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Mead has seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, what, no corny jokes?
No.
Oh, come on. Like I said, we could have gone all night long without hearing the last one. All right, the next item is item H, a consideration of Stanton City Council Retreat Report Vision Values Strategic Areas Actions. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard will present this item.
Okay, thank you, so just to provide a quick review, on August tenth and eleventh, city council had a retreat where you all arrived at some new priorities. Council received and approved those minutes of the retreat on September ninth, but at the September twenty-third meeting, we discussed at length the synthesized elements of the retreat and that report is attached to this item as well, in addition to the PowerPoint presentation that I did that night. So what staff is asking tonight is to adopt your new vision, values, strategic areas and actions contained in the attached report so that city staff can start to implement those and start to put those into action and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that city council adopt the Stanton City Council Retreat Report, including its visions, values, strategic areas and actions.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Counselor Darby has seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to matters from the city manager, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, thank you, I have nothing for council this evening.
So that takes us to matters from the public. I'll read the rules, matters from the public, this part of the city council agenda is entitled Matters from the Public, it is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the clerk of council to end your call and if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code, Section eighteen point two dash four one five A two. Two, this is a time for us as a council simply to listen to your remarks and in effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to individual employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous, using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the city of Stanton and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules for our interim clerk of council, Ms. Smith, and now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participants using Zoom platform. All right, anyone from the audience that would like to address the city council? Welcome.
My name is Christy Crittendon and I live at two oh eight North Market Street and it's a lovely block that has stop signs at the top of Market on the corner of Academy and then a second stop sign at Prospect. There's stop signs that on that, that's stretch of Market, but there are not stop signs on Academy going down the hill or stop signs on Prospect going down the hill. And this last month, one of my neighbor's cars was sideswiped with a hit and run and we've, as a neighborhood, have constantly commented on how amazed we are that students or the general public can get up a lot of speed between that one block and we're very concerned, we have children and we have pets and of course, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic with students from Mary Baldwin and I would just like to raise that awareness that there might need to be some increased stop signs or a speed bump on that stretch of Market Street. There have been a number of accidents, just small accidents, but I do have an eleven-year-old child and I'm very concerned that her safety is protected and the students come out of the Mary Baldwin parking lot without stopping at this parking lot and zoom down Market Street and, and I often have to really like almost, it's just not safe and I just wanted to raise that awareness tonight and ask you all to consider a traffic study or a speed bump or an additional stop sign that would help protect the residents and the, especially the children, but the students and the, the pets as well, so I'd appreciate your consideration in looking into that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, do we have anyone on the Zoom?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right, anyone else from the audience? All right, hearing none, the regular, would you like to address the council? If you can come up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, dear members of the Stanton City Mayor and the council members, please accept my deepest gratitude for approving the resolution to educate Stanton City residents and the medical community about the practice of state-sponsored organ harvesting from prisoners of conscience in the People's Republic of China. This immoral practice has been underreported in the US media and the Chinese Communist Party has been working tirelessly to hide the situation from the rest of the world. Your resolution will help Stanton residents and the healthcare professionals make and inform the decision when considering options for an organ transplant. It will also give hope to prisoners of conscience in China who look forward to the day when the practice of forced organ harvesting will end. I believe that your courage and compassion will bring blessings and prosperity to you and the residents of Stanton City. I thank you and all Stanton residents for your kind and generous support of human rights and religious, religious freedom, thank you.
Thank you, can you give your name and address, please?
My name's Jisung Bay, I came from originally from South Korea and then living in Fairford County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one last chance, any hands raised?
No one's with their hands raised.
All right, with that, the regular meeting.
Madam Mayor, you don't want to adjourn the regular meeting.
Well, okay, I do not need to adjourn the regular meeting and go into a closed?
No, we need a closed meeting.
Okay, just simply, simply a closed meeting, all right.
Entertain the motion.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed meeting.
And the same motion that was used for the, during the work session is appropriate.
Wait a minute, I'm not finished. I have a few words to say.
Mr. Fossa, we've moved on, we're past that, we're going into a closed meeting.
I know.
Not tonight, Mr. Fossa, we've moved past that.
What? I can't hear.
We've moved past that and, no, sir. We're, we're going into a closed meeting.
You're going to close the meeting?
Yes.
Without giving me an opportunity to speak?
We gave ample opportunity, Mr. Fossa. We gave ample opportunity, Mr. Fossa.
You didn't give me an opportunity to speak.
Would the council like to hear from Mr. Fossa?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Fossa, we'll make this exception for you. Hold on one second, Mr. Fossa, we need to get the clock going. Go right ahead.
Where's the time?
Right up on the monitor.
Okay, it's, I haven't even spoken yet. You all know me, I've been here many times, I've explained a lot of things, a few of lists supposedly listened, but you haven't understood a single word. Twelve percent of what somebody talks about is understood, well, over forty-five percent. If you see things and I've shown you a bunch of things and I'm angry and I shouldn't be. I've been accused, only recently, I've been accused by the head of the real estate department of being very out of order. I wasn't out of order, I had a meeting, I wanted to talk to the technician and he came out of his office and wanted to know where I got my information. It was none of his business where I got it, I told him that I would deal with him another time. I see he's here today and I see he's not wanting, didn't get up to speak, I was hoping he would get up and say some things, but obviously he didn't want to speak. I have to tell you, when I first started picketing, it was about my facility and my assessments, I live within thirteen feet of that railroad, can you understand that? And that railroad goes right thirteen feet and the whole house shakes. Location, location, location determines the value of a real estate and that real estate location is terrible. At one time, there were three colored families that lived in that facility, they dug out a cellar section and they lived in that thing, three families of color. It was terrible, terrible, it caught on fire and it was bought by Charlie Bishop, I guess, he sold it to me and I did something to redo it, but I never made it into something that was of original value. How they arrive at that value, I don't know. They send me notices and they send me material that's irrelevant, they compare the house to two-story houses, it's a one-story house, it has a crappy cellar, it's filled with snakes and rats and mice and it's hard to get rid of them. The place is not worth eighty-one thousand dollars, not worth in a million years in that area. But then again, I started to do some investigations and I investigated and I find there are certain discrepancies that are going on, are you listening? How can something in the area of two hundred houses be that are assessed at over two hundred thousand dollars each, that are assessed at over two hundred dollars each, have no increase in assessments? How can houses that are assessed at two hundred thousand dollars or more have decreases in assessments of ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars? How can Newtown and the surrounding area, every one of those houses for the most part are outhouses and they're all assessed at an average of twenty-six percent? How is that possible? How is it possible that the Real Estate Appeals Board, their assessments are less than five percent? How is it possible that your assessments, because I've investigated yours assessment, are over assessed in some instances and yet even at that, it's less than five percent or very close to five percent? How is all of this possible? Do you understand the difference between integrity and honesty? The prisons are filled with honest people. Yes, I killed her, yes, I beat her up, yes, I hijacked the car. They're imprisoned because they have no integrity. They don't- They don't know that, they know the difference between what is right and what is wrong, and they're not doing the right thing. How can Augusta County have an assessment of 64% while Stanton has an assessment tax rate of 95%? That's 30% 30 points difference. That's outrageous. This year, Augusta County did not increase their assessment. Why? Why are your assessments so increased? Why? Who benefits by it? I don't benefit by it.
Mr. Fossa, your time is up.
People are out of work. They got some money from the government. And the real estate people.
Mr. Fossa, your time is up.
I need more time. And your excuse of not giving me the su-
All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed meeting.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
I move that council enter a closed meeting.
Hey, don't run away. Let them hear you live.
I move that council enter a closed meeting for the discussion of prospective candidates for appointment to the position of clerk of council pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're now in a closed meeting.
Okay.
Holmes.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempted public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Darby, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and with that, we're back in the regular meeting. As the mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the meeting of October 14, 2021, to a close.